Mike.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission Meeting. The time is now 5:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order. It has been posted as required by state law. We have a full quorum of the Commission as everyone is present. At this time, I'll ask for everyone to please rise as Commissioner Cavazos-Gomez leads us in our invocation.
Heavenly Father. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today for this first meeting of my service as City Commissioner, I come before you with gratitude and humility. Thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, a place I love, a place filled with families, stories, and hopes that deserve our very best. Guide each of us at this table with clarity, compassion, and patience. Help us lead with steady minds and open hearts, always remembering that every decision we make impacts the lives of our neighbors. Lord, I ask for your wisdom as I begin this new chapter, strengthen my, excuse me, strengthen my commitment to listen, to learn, and to work faithfully for the people of our city. Allow me to be a voice of unity and understanding, and may my service reflect integrity, kindness, and purpose. Bless our conversations tonight. Let them be respectful, productive, and rooted in the common good. Watch over our community, every household, every business, every heart, so that together we continue building a city where everyone can thrive. We place this meeting and our work in your hands. Amen.
Now, the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark?
Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a Commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion or vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
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 Item three announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, Mayor's Announcements. Mayor?
Well, I, I just want to take a moment to, to really just thank HEB for the incredible partnership that we have with them. Today, we had the Feast of Sharing that we have annually. Several of you were there, helping and volunteering and serving, and it was a wonderful opportunity to see the community come together. I believe, you know, as I was leaving the, the event, they said this may have been the largest Feast of Sharing in the region, and it just goes to show the, the need that we have here in our community to feed families in Harlingen. And I also want to encourage everyone to go on to the City of Harlingen Facebook page if you have time. We have joined forces. All of the nonprofits have come together in our community in hopes of raising funds for the RGV Food Bank, and so we have rolled out a campaign to raise funds for the food bank, and all of the money that is raised will go to feed Harlingen families and to ensure that the food pantries in our community can stock their shelves. So if you have the opportunity, please, this is a coalition, the Harlingen Hunger Coalition made up of nonprofits in our community, that five dollars, ten dollars, a hundred dollars, whatever you have in your heart. I learned today from the RGV Food Bank that if you donate one dollar, that will feed, that will provide five meals, one dollar. So every dollar counts, and I just want to encourage everybody to donate if you feel it in your heart to do so. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 3B, City Manager's Announcements. Mr. Garcia?
I just wanted to let the community know that the city offices, the non-emergency city offices will be closed next Thursday and Friday due to the observance of the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay, moving on to 3C, City Commission Members' Announcements. Commissioner?
I do want to take some time this, right now, to thank, on Monday, there was some, that we had our swearing-in, and I didn't take the time to thank the many people that helped me. This is my first City Commission meeting, and I want to thank my family. They were so supportive to me throughout my campaign, and a lot of my friends and volunteers. I do want to take the time to thank them. I didn't take the time at that time, and I want to really say thank you from the bottom of my heart, and to the people that I met, also thank you. That's it.
None. None. I just want to wish the community happy Thanksgiving, since this will be the last meeting of the month, and we'll get a chance to, so happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
We're going to move on to item four, Proclamation and Presentation of Rewards. For A is Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
I saw you had like a white lab on, right?
She was waiting for the elevator, so she's right there, but I'm sorry, she's running late.
If you, if you want to, if you want to step back, and we'll take all of the kids that are anxiously waiting, and we can move on to the other two, and then we'll circle back.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to the presentation of recognition for the Harlingen High School South Hawks Boys and Girls Tennis Team.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Tonight, we have a certificate of achievement presented to Harlingen South Hawks Varsity Boys and Girls Tennis Teams. In recognition of their excellence and contributions to the 2025 Harlingen South Varsity Boys and Girls Tennis Team, celebrating 2025 District 32-5A Team Tennis Champions, 2025 Bi-District Champions, 15 All-District Award Recipients, seven All-Academic Team Honorees. Your performance on and off the court reflects the highest standards of Hawk athletics. Congratulations, team. If you could join us up here so we can have a photo taken.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Yeah, we'll have the Commission join us. We are so incredibly proud of your hard work and for making Harlingen proud, and as always, I'll go ahead and punt over to Commissioner Betta, since he's the hawk in the room, to provide the.
On behalf of the, the City Commission, I know some of you, some of you are my students, and some of you I've seen in the hallways, and this is my way. Every time I see you guys, you seem great at South. I was trying to recognize you guys, because I know the stuff that you go through, especially if you have my class. I understand how hard I put you through. Some of you aren't talking about, but the point is that you guys still go out there, you still compete, and you're the best of the best, and I know that has a large part due to the coaches that you have. I know the coaches you have are excellent. They put everything out there, and they need you guys to make trades all the time. So, on behalf of the City, we're very proud of you. That's pretty much what I'm saying. If any of the parents want to come and take a picture, you're more than welcome to come take pictures as well.
Yes, we do. We have three, four more, or three. Yes, three of them.
Think we can, are you ready to go? We can circle back to Pet of the Week?
Yes. We will come back to the Harlingen Animal Shelter Pet of the Week.
There she is.
Good evening again, Mayor and City Commission. I apologize for our tardiness. Sometimes working with animals can be a little challenging. They have a mind of their own sometimes. But tonight, we have brought Almond. You may recognize Almond. She has been here before. She was actually turned into the Harlingen Animal Shelter in May. She was adopted in August, and unfortunately, the lady, person who adopted her, had some medical concerns and has to be, go into an assisted living area, so Almond has come back to us. So she is back to looking for her forever home. She's about a year old. She's spayed, current on all of her vaccines, and she is patiently waiting. So anybody who's interested in Almond or any of the animals at the Harlingen Animal Shelter is welcome to go by 1106 Markowski to visit Almond and all of her friends, or call at 956-216-5950. And just as another side note, the Harlingen Animal Shelter will be at the Petco in Weslaco the Saturday from 10 to 2, doing adoptions. So they'll have adoptions in Weslaco and in Harlingen.
Fantastic. Well, thank you. We hope Almond finds another forever home. I thought she was going to have a little taco, I think I said that earlier. No. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item 4C. We have a presentation of recognition for Sir's Martini Lounge.
Certificate of Recognition presented to Sir's Martini Lounge in recognition of Best Commercial Interior Award. Congratulations, Sir Martini Lounge, winner of the People's Choice Award for Best Commercial Interior. Sir's Martini Lounge is more than a stylish cocktail bar. It is a story of resilience, creativity, and community brought to life through thoughtful design. Owner Jesus Pinya, a proud Latin immigrant, veteran, and Harlingen native, built Sir's both as a love letter to his roots and a welcoming space for all. Since opening in November 2019, Sir's has become a downtown cornerstone where beautiful people and great spirits gather amid warm lighting, vintage furnishings, and the sparkle of a disco ball. When expansion opportunities arose in 2022, Mr. Pinya and his team embraced the challenge with innovation, transforming a limited footprint into two connected spaces that harmonized nostalgia and modern energy. The result is a venue with cozy nooks, lively patios, and a seamless flow between live music and DJ atmospheres. This award celebrates not only exceptional design, but also the spirit of a place built from passion, perseverance, and a deep love for the community. Congratulations, Mr. Pinya. If you'd like to come up?
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners. Good evening. I want to thank the Downtown Committee for nominating us for the People's Choice Award. I'd like to thank my staff for all their hard work. I'd like to thank my sisters, Carmina and Sonia, and my brother Abel, for always keeping Sir's Martini Lounge fresh. The, the eclectic atmosphere, it's always top-notch. I'd also like to thank everyone that voted for us as the People's Choice Award, and to my parents, and to God. Thank you.
Well, don't, don't, don't leave. We'd love to take a photo with you, but I just want to, you know, just tell you how wonder, how wonderful that your, you know, the two bars and combining the two, I think that, you know, the way Delma was presenting it, I think you really have to go in and experience it for yourself, but you've really transformed that space, and I know that people, when they come to Harlingen, that's a go-to place, and people talk about it all over the region, and now you've been recognized for all of your hard work. And I know that Daniel's really proud of everything that you've done to just level up, right, in, at Downtown, so I don't know if you have a few words for them. If not, we can take a photo.
You guys do awesome. You see me at least once a month, right, just to go check it out.
Just to check it out.
Just to check it out only, right? You got to support local businesses, but you guys do a phenomenal job. Thank you so much. You guys have really revitalized and been the, the motivating force behind the west side of the railroad tracks, and it just seems like you guys are that glue that holds everything together. So thank you so much. There's so much more to come. We're doing the improvements on the lighting downtown, and we're going to do more and more to help not only y'all, but every other business downtown that we can, and along y'all's corridor. Thank you so much.
And we'd love to take a photo with you.
Okay, we need to come this way, right there, just like that. Yeah. Ready? One, two, three. One, two, three.
And three, two, one. And three, two, and one.
All right, moving right along.
We're going to move on to the next item, which is Presentation of Proclamation for Coach Josue Gano.
Our first proclamation for the night honoring Coach Josue Gano Jr., whereas Coach Josue Gano Jr. began his career in education immediately after college and has devoted more than 30 years of exceptional service to the Harlingen Consolidated Independent School District, serving his entire career at Zavala Elementary, becoming not only an educator, but a foundational pillar of the campus community. And whereas throughout his distinguished career, Coach Gano has embodied the values of dedication, humility, and leadership, consistently inspiring students to drive for excellence, both in the classroom and beyond, earning recognition as Teacher of the Year in 2015. And whereas also found Zavala's annual Earth Day Run Walk and Ride Event, transforming it into a cherished school and community tradition that promotes health, environmental awareness, and family engagement. And he has led the Jump Rope for Heart Initiative, motivating students to raise awareness and funds in support of the American Heart Association, while teaching the importance of health, empathy, and service. And whereas Coach Gano has served as a school leader, trusted colleague, and mentor, guiding countless teachers and staff members with wisdom, professionalism, and unwavering support, helping strengthen Zavala Elementary's culture of collaboration and student-centered learning. And whereas, as Coach Gano enters retirement, and the City of Harlingen honors his remarkable legacy of service, mentorship, and positive influence, extending far beyond athletics, and ensuring students feel seen, valued, and encouraged, leaving a lasting impact on families throughout the community. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of the City of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby proclaim November 19th, 2025, as Coach Josue Gano Jr. Day, and call upon all citizens to join me in expressing our deepest gratitude to Coach Gano for his 30 years of outstanding service, his commitment to generations of students, and his enduring contributions to education and our community. Congratulations, Coach Josue Gano.
I thank you guys, all of you all, for, for your support. I'm glad that I did all my years at Zavala Elementary. I am so proud of my kids, because they're the ones that, that make me go on and on and just be there for the years that I have been there. I've had, you know, their moms, and now, I mean, I've gotten generation and generation, so I'm so proud of my, of my school, Zavala. It's a small community, and it's a community-based, and I'm telling you, everybody knows each other there. So I'm very glad that you guys appointed me as, as being here. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Coach.
Norma Sepulveda, you need to go to the next bike ride, okay?
Yes, yes.
Because I've, I've been inviting you, but your husband already waited. I want you to go.
I think he's, he'd probably, you know, my husband is one of those that doesn't come to many events, but he goes to the Zavala events, because he is Zavala proud, you know. I know, unfortunately, 30 years isn't going to reach to have him in, in, in your class, but, you know, I'm so proud of Zavala. You do so much work in the community, and I know that, you know, whether it's, you know, the runs, or the, or all the stuff that you do also with Commissioner Lopez, and just really pouring into the children in that community, and really teaching the future leaders. So thank you so much, and it's so admirable. I know Oscar said 30 years, like 30 years, that's, that's, that's amazing, and to choose, you could go anywhere, but to choose to stay in a school where you'll have such a significant impact is very admirable. So thank you so much for all you do, and we'd love to take a photo with you, and I'll be there next.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez as well. Thank you for going.
Three, and three, two, one. And. And three, two, one. One more, and three, two, and one. Go.
Ready? One, two, three, 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 and three.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item, which is another presentation of a proclamation for the Children's Bereavement Center, Rio Grande Valley.
Our last proclamation for the evening reads as, whereas Harlingen, Texas, as a community acknowledges that grieving the death of a loved one is a complex process, and one that deeply affects children. Children grieve developmentally and will grieve the death loss throughout their development. Children, adolescents, and young adults lack the knowledge, experience, and vocabulary needed to ensure their feelings, ask questions, and cope with such a loss. The impact of unresolved grief on children as they grow can impair healthy development, lead to mal, lead to mal behaviors, and leave families facing heart-wrenching challenges as well as our community. Whereas Harlingen, Texas recognizes that children grieve differently than adults. It takes most children much longer to deal with their grief, even when there is no outward sign of inner turmoil. A storm of emotions can still be raging inside a grieving child's heart. When the inner turmoil is more intense than we recognize, these children feel their struggles are invisible and those around them. They feel set apart, different from their peers, alone, and misunderstood. Whereas Harlingen, Texas is a community which chooses to shine a light of compassion and support for the grieving children, adolescents, and young adults, as well as their caregivers and families, to understand the depth of their grief, stabilize and preserve family relationships, and develop healthy coping skills after the death of a loved one. Whereas Harlingen, Texas is a community which encourages citizens to recognize that children and adults grieve differently, and therefore advocate to educate and raise awareness about the needs of grieving children, adolescents, and young adults, by encouraging honest, age-appropriate conversations around the topics of death and grief. Awareness supports overcoming cultural bias and highlights the resources available to make death and grief a topic that can be spoken of openly and compassionately. Whereas Harlingen, Texas acknowledges the mission of the Children's Bereavement Center, Rio Whereas Harlingen, Texas acknowledges the mission of the Children's Bereavement Center, Rio Grande Valley, to foster healing for grieving youth, their families, and the community, and support the campaign for national children's grief awareness. Let no child or family walk the painful journey of grief alone. Now therefore, I, Norma Sepulveda, Mayor of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby proclaim November as Children's Grief Awareness Month and Thursday, November twentieth, twenty twenty-five, as Children's Grief Awareness Day, in accordance with all the national movement to bring awareness and support for the grieving children in our community and across the nation. If we can have a representative for the Children's Bereavement Center come up?
It would be me.
Awesome.
Mayor and Commissioners, it's been several years since I've had the opportunity to stand before you. So many years that the only person still here from the last time I spoke before you is Mesmar. Commissioner Perez, you might have been on the commission already before I retired from Loaves and Fishes. I don't remember for sure. But two things, two things stand out to me as I stand before you. One is what a wonderful thing democracy is, that in the course of five years, that our city government can elect an almost an entirely new commission, and that all of you have stepped up to serve our community as you have. And secondly, I get to be one of the first people to address a city commission that has two women on the city commission, one the mayor and another a commissioner. I believe in the whole time I was at Loaves and Fishes, there was not one single woman on the city commission. So ladies, congratulations to you. Congratulations to all of you on the commission today. I'm so very pleased and happy that you're taking a moment to recognize Children's Grief Awareness Month. And tomorrow is Children's Grief Awareness Day. I want to take the opportunity to invite you, Mayor, and Commissioners, and city staff, and you, the citizens of Harlingen, as well. If you're able to make it. We're having a candlelight vigil at our facility on South Sunshine Strip. We're in that big red building in front of Jason's Deli. It'll be at six o'clock. And if any of you are able to join us for that candlelight vigil, we'll be very, very pleased. So thank you very much for the recognition and the proclamation. I'm so happy for all of you, and congratulations to all of you. You getting my picture made with you?
Yes, sir. And I just want to say, you know, I was really excited to learn that you are now at the helm of the organization. And I think everyone knew that you wouldn't stay retired for long.
I didn't do a good job of it.
It's a good, it's good sometimes to be a failure in those things when you have so much to give back. Thank you for all you do. It's hard work, incredibly hard work, and so needed. And so we appreciate you and everything you do for the families in our community. And we'd love to take a photo with you.
Thank you very much, Mayor. You wanna take a picture with my phone, too?
All righty, Ms. Calista, Boardwoman, where are we going?
Good evening, everyone. So as you know, Mayor's Business of the Month is an initiative that's been happening since September of twenty twenty-three and going strong. And we highlight local businesses here in Harlingen. And so before we invite the owner up to take a photo and say a few words, we have prepared a video for you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Diaz, Banchita's Mexican Restaurant Manager. Banchita's is all heart. I always say that we are Harlingen's best-kept secret because even though we've been here for twenty-four years, there are quite a few people who still don't know that we're here. Our hours are a little bit limited, but we, for nineteen years, we served seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-one days a year. We would only close on the major holidays. I wanted us to be a place that you could come when, you know, your day may not be going very well, but we greet you with a smile, we greet you with a hug, and you feel like you're coming home to, you know, a family. And we just want to give you a little bit of hope. So when I found out that the SNAP recipients were potentially not going to get their monies, I just thought, my gosh, so many little ones are gonna be hungry. In honor of my late brother, we provide food for anyone in need throughout the years, any day. They just show up, they sit down, and we know that we need to provide a food and a drink for them. That's what we do. You know, in our culture, we feed. And that's how we show you we love. And that's basically what it is. It's a taco, it's spreading our love. We are located at ten twenty-one South Commerce, on the corner of Little Creek and Commerce. Essentially, we would like to continue our legacy to be, to give back. I think it's just so prevalent right now for us to share a smile, words of kindness, just to spread our love, because everybody needs a little pick-me-up every now and then, and good food.
Ms. Jeannie, you'd like to come up? You hungry now?
Food's always fantastic, babe.
That's right by your house, right?
Hello, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. What an honor. We did just celebrate our twenty-fourth anniversary, and I still look the same from all those years ago. I wish. But thank you for allowing us. It is an honor to serve our community for all these years and to continue to serve. I always say I'm ready to retire, but even if I do that, we will still continue to serve in any capacity that we can. Ultimately, our food is made with love, to be able to share the love. And that's what we continue to hope to do, is to give a little hope to everyone and share our love and a smile. Thank you.
So, you know, through this initiative, we're able to highlight so many small businesses in the community. And staff does a great job, and they're always so excited on who they're gonna go interview, and they're gonna get, you know, get the story. But when it was decided on that you were going to be the next recipient, I know staff was really excited, and they just thought, what an incredible human being you are to be thinking of others. And I know the last time that I had seen you is a roundtable and talking about how restaurants are struggling. So what people don't see is that while you're trying, you know, sacrificing just to keep the doors open, you're also thinking of others. And that's the definition of being a selfless person. So thank you for all you do here in the community. And I hope everybody goes out and supports you, so that way you can continue to support those that need it the most. So thank you. We'd love to take a photo with you to honor you.
Mayor, we're gonna move on to item five, which is Citizens Communication. At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. This time, we have five that have signed up, and we're gonna start with Mr. Raymond Reyes.
Raymond Reyes, seven zero six Natucket Drive, here in Harlingen. Congratulations, Mayor, Commissioners, for getting elected. As always, there's always a lot of good things going on in Harlingen. But on the same token, there's always concerns. That's kind of like what I like to do, is some concern to make sure as elected officials, we're doing the right things for the right reasons. One thing that I've mentioned, and unfortunately, it hasn't been addressed or they haven't come back to me yet. But I was concerned about all the vandalism going on in the parks. It's a continued issue. It's been an ongoing problem. It's not the first time it's come up. But I was shocked when they told me that there were, those are quotes submitted to purchase four thousand dollar cameras for these parks. Can you imagine? I mean, really? Four thousand dollar cameras? And, you know, I think we can do a lot better than that. That needs to be looked at. And I've mentioned it, and I've never said that it's been brought up. I know some other departments got cameras that were kind of like the cameras I have, solar-powered. They can hold, last up to four days. The sun goes away, you got four days. They're AI cameras. They can make a distinguish between a cat and a person. It would help alleviate some of the vandalism. That's an ongoing problem. Then I was looking at the twenty-five-year plan. I found that very interesting as well. I actually noticed on there that apparently my property was, I guess, bought out or something because they had a, you know, they told me that, no, that was not the plan. But, you know, I looked at it, and I was like, well, my property's not there anymore. For one, it's not for sale. It's never gonna be for sale. The city has attempted to buy it before, many decades back. So I think we need to make sure we're doing the right things for the right reasons. I also saw this thing with Commerce after the five million dollars was spent. In my opinion, as an IT, I put the same information that they used into an AI program that I have. Didn't cost me five million dollars. It actually took forty-five minutes to come up with the same kind of solutions. Eighty million dollars for a project like that? There's gonna be excessive cost overruns. That's just the way it is. So we need to make sure we stay on our A-game. And remember, we're trying to do the best things for the citizens of Harlingen and work with what we got. You know, let's handle the problems we currently have at the moment. We always want to look for the future, but we don't want to forget about the issues we have today. And on that note, I'm out. I have to go. I think I beat the buzzer. Y'all have a good evening. And again, congratulations, Commissioners, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
We're gonna move on to Mariana Salcedo.
Good afternoon, Harlingen City Commissioners and Mayor. I wanted to start by saying that although I was not born in Harlingen, I do consider myself somewhat of a Harlingen native. There is so much to be proud of as a member of my community. However, today I want to talk about an issue that has been on my mind for some time. Now, this may sound silly, but in order to walk to my local HEB for most days of the year, I would have to either strategically plan a later hour and risk walking in the dark to avoid the harsh sun, or only walk in the sun when winter finally comes. And I think we all know it's a long wait until winter comes back again at the start of every year, and it doesn't seem to stay long enough. Even though I live five minutes away from the closest HEB, I take my car instead. This city is very much vehicle-centered, not pedestrian-centered. I am forced to take the car to get my groceries, using up a lot of gas. This compiles to a lot of unnecessary consumption weekly, monthly, yearly. This leads me to bring up the issue of there being little to no shade trees for the few spaces that are walkable areas. Walking a short distance can be actively discouraging. I believe this is a form of indirect hostile architecture. Having shade trees by a sidewalk significantly decreases the temperature of the shaded area by roughly twenty-five degrees Fahrenheit, according to the U.S. Department of Energy. So by introducing native shade vegetation, we can bring about a more inviting walking culture instead of a strictly vehicle-centered city, instead of having such a short walking window during cooler months or evenings. We can invite more elderly folks, people with pets, and children in our community to be encouraged to walk. I also wanted to share something personal. When I was nineteen, going on twenty, I was somehow kind of anxious to be leaving behind my teenage years and was now about to face the prospect of my twenties. Apparently, they're supposed to be the most important years of my life. I started to reflect on the era that was closing and what kind of attitude I wanted to lead with in the new one. I thought on how much I have taken while on this earth, how all my life I've taken and given so little back. So if twenty years would now go by, maybe I could make up for them by planting a tree for every year. I told my parents I would love nothing more than for my birthday gift to be twenty trees. My incredible and awesome parents obliged. We planted twenty trees and plants on our property to commemorate my life on this earth. We were giving back to the environment and at the same time bringing in more color, nectar for pollinating insects and hummingbirds, shade, and oxygen back into our lovely home. This is how much I care about the home that I live in and the community that I share. This is why I'm asking for your help to make our community more friendly, habitable, and beautiful for us all by including more native shading trees. Because when we help the environment, we all benefit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Salcedo.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on to Kevin Alcozado.
Hello. My name is Kevin Alcozado, and I'm currently a student at U. Charge V. I lived in Harlingen my whole life, and for one of my class projects, we were asked to look at issues within our own community. One that stood out to me the most is one I see a lot on the way home. There's a relatively new spot here in Harlingen called the Moon Rock Cafe, oh, the Moon Rock, located at eighteen eleven West Jefferson Avenue. It's become really popular with people in our community, especially at night. Many go there from family, friends, younger people. Everyone goes to hang out, eat, to support the local businesses. A problem I noticed is that there is no crosswalks, blinking lights, and no proper signs indicating people are crossing. And I have a picture here showing people crossing the street. And it seems like every time I pass by, I see people parking on the other side of the street and running or walking towards to the location. It's a very busy street, and cars are constantly moving by. And at night, it's even more challenging to see the people crossing. Me personally, I live very close to this, so on my way home, I pass there a lot. And I had to stop suddenly or slow down suddenly to the people crossing or running. It's very unsafe, and not only for the pedestrians, but as well as the drivers. Just, it feels like an accident just waiting to happen. So the solution I found is very simple and affordable, is to add some crosswalks, maybe a light, and signs to help the pedestrians cross safely and for the drivers to see the pedestrians crossing. It wouldn't just make the area safer, but it would show that the city supports local businesses and cares for the people that are going to them. Harlingen is growing, and places like the Moon Rock bring people together. If we want to continue to grow these places, we also have to make sure they're safe. I'm not only asking for crosswalks, but asking for the safety of the people. I'm not asking for anything big or expensive, just for the safety of the people. Thank you for your time, and I hope this is something you can consider.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Alcozado.
We're gonna move on to Mr. Pedro Maldonado.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Pedro Maldonado. I live in the corner of Moore's in Louisiana. And the concern that I have is the drainage system. Every time it rains, it floods in that area, just that little corner right there. What I did the last time when we had the, I put dirt all around the house, everything. And I said, I got it. It's not gonna, water's not gonna come in. Well, I forgot to put a little bit more dirt on the driveway because all the water came in through the driveway, and that's where all the water came in. I have a concern because I'm the only one that gets this. Nobody else does, okay? The water goes in that corner, and it just goes into my lot, four-acre lot. And the concern that I have is it needs to be cleaned more often. And the drainage system, it just goes all the way in front of my house and on the side. And the drainage system, it just goes all the way in front of my house and on the side, and that's it. From then on, it's flat. So I'm the only one that has this particular problem. And I just wanted to bring it up and have this concern. I did talk to the irrigation person that you just hired. You hired the right person. I talked to him, explained everything, very simple. He said, I'm not going to be able to do everything right away. I understand that. But I just wanted to make sure that I expressed my concern and that I'm glad that he listened, and I thanked him for it. But I don't know what you can do, if, I don't know if you have any plans or anything like that, but it's just that little corner. That's, that's a concern. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Maldonado. As you heard earlier, the City Secretary said we are governed by rules where we can't communicate. But this has been very, very informative. We thank everybody for their comments. But I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Maldonado, that we are scheduled for a phone call. I know staff, our engineers are going to be reaching out to you to, to talk to you about that issue. So thank you.
Our last one, Mayor, is Diana Padilla.
This kind of adds really good to what Mr. Maldonado says. Mr. Maldonado is my neighbor. Mr. Maldonado floods because of something that you guys did on the street, not because of my irrigation problem. Am I correct? You can nod if yes or no. So I have a letter from him stating that, in case you need to add that to your notes. I'm not here regarding that because we do not flood in our area. He floods because they made the street. When they made the street, they made it a little bit different, and the water doesn't flow correctly. That's nothing to do with the ditch. I'm here today because you have on one of your agendas that you're going to vote on, $240,000 for irrigation for the ditch, the drainage ditch. And it doesn't say anything else to what you're going to spend $240,000 where. So my concern is, I came to a meeting sometime in the summer, spoke to the engineer Ennandez, I believe that's his name, and he said the only plans that were going to be done was the irrigation canal on my property because of the storm, not because of anything else. So you, we, we already have the issue that we're going to address. In a subdivision on Horseshoe, Horseshoe Lake, I believe it's called, there was another drawing set up. And in that drawing, you have another irrigation issue or project that is going to affect Mr. Maldonado as well. And he was not even aware that you're going to take some of his property for that ditch. So I can't say if the $240,000, in addition to the $40,000 you're going to spend on ours, they're both for Mr. Simmons' projects. If, if the 240 is for that project, that you're not, still not addressing the other landowners. Mr. Maldonado didn't know he owns property on the opposite side. Nancy Klein doesn't know. Mr. T.B. Valencia doesn't know. And you're allocating money, if this is the case, because there's no packet in there, for projects without the owners knowing that they're going to be affected. That's my concern. When you allocate money, like in my case, the owners need to be considered. They need to be considered. They need, just like you just said, Mayor, that you're going to call Mr. Pedro Maldonado, and you're going to do that? How come you guys didn't do that for me? How come you didn't come and talk to me? You know, why are the plans made with the irrigation district and the city and not the landowner? I'm going to talk until that bell rings, by the way. So what I'm saying, thank you for listening, and I will be here every single time if I have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Padilla. You did bring up an agenda item. I invite you to stay for the presentation. I think that'll give some clarity to your concerns.
We're going to move on to item six, the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of August 6, 2025.
Are there any amendments to the minutes?
None.
Get a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion from Lopez and a second from?
Second.
From Fettis. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
Item seven is consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Any items to be removed? Can I get a motion to approve items seven A through C?
Motion second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries unanimously.
Item eight is staff reports and other discussion items. Items in this section are not expected to require action by the City Commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or the city manager. Item eight, A, city manager's report. Mr. Garcia, do you have?
No.
No? Okay. We're going to move on to item eight B, staff reports. We have a presentation from the Harlingen Fire Department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, Andrew Garcia, Madam Secretary-Counselor. My name is Darryl Loftus. I serve as one of the Assistant Fire Chiefs for the Harlingen Fire Department, and I have a colleague, Joey Alberton, who serves as the Deputy Fire Chief. In Fire Chief Valetta's absence, he was previously committed at, to attend a Fire Investigator Conference, unfortunately, that happens to be on the island. So he sends his apologies, but to fill those big shoes, he sent two of us. So we'll be co-presenting tonight on the Harlingen Fire Department, and Deputy Chief Alberton will start us off.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. So I'd like to start out by saying that we are one department. And by one department, I mean we're the Harlingen Fire Department, and that's a name that we take a lot of pride in. We do have two training fields. We have one training field on, on Markowski Street, and we have another one out at our Emergency Operations Center. Our department, our operations section is divided into three shifts. We have an A, B, and C shift. They work 24 hours on, 48 hours off. We have four divisions in our department. We'll go over those in a little more detail in, in the next slide. We do have eight fire stations. I think it's notable to recognize that Station One, built in 1950, just celebrated its 75th anniversary. And we're staffed with 110 civil servants and four civilian personnel. We do have a paramilitary rank structure. We have one fire chief, Chief Balderas. We have two assistant chiefs, two deputy chiefs, nine captains, 30 lieutenants, 33 drivers, and 33 firefighters. So our goal, our mission statement, is to serve without prejudice or favoritism all citizens of the city of Harlingen, Cameron County, and neighboring cities by safeguarding their lives and properties against perils of fires, explosions, hazardous materials, and to provide emergency medicine and respond to any other threatening forces that fall within our realm of jurisdiction and responsibilities. If you'll take a look at the lower left of the screen, that's, that's an example of some of the, I guess, different types of services than you might normally expect. That, that dog was actually trapped into the base of a light pole. And those, that family pulled up to our Fire Station Three. And so we were able to remove that dog and, and provide that service to the community. So our divisions, the four divisions that I mentioned earlier, we have our operations division. So they respond to and manage, and manage incidents natured in fire, rescue, and emergency medicine. So that's the bulk of our department. Those are the guys you see every day riding on the fire trucks, handling the calls to service and providing that to the community. We have our training division. Their role is to ensure quality control and professional development of our staff. And that goes from the recruits all the way up to our veteran personnel. So we're ensuring that they receive the training that's required and to help them develop. Support Services, that's our admin. So we're doing what's necessary to get our staff the resources that they need. And then we have our Prevention Division, which they, they do our public education, plan reviews, and investigation. Some illustrative examples of some of the types of services that we provide and what we do. If you look up at the top left, that's, that's our burn building out at the EOC. So that building was a, is a joint collaboration between the City of Harlingen and the HCISD. And that was actually a grant-funded project. So we use that building all the way from initial certification as part of their initial training. And our veteran guys go through a live-fire evolution at least once a year. In addition to the school district, also utilizes that for their Fire Academy program. To the right of that, you see some hazardous materials training going on. So we do have a regional hazmat response team. We go from Omito all the way to the county line and then all the way north to the Sarita checkpoint. So we do have currently 39 hazmat techs in the department. Lower left, we see an example of some wildland firefighting. So that's where we protect property from, from any type of wildland fire in addition to saving livestock and agricultural products. Bottom right, you see an example of our ARF training. So the guys in the ARF program are required to do annual burns, and that's illustrated in that bottom right picture. We currently have 25 ARF personnel in the program that are assignable, and we have 10 in reserve. All of our staff are medically trained, so that means we have 110 medically trained personnel in the department ready to provide service. To the right of that, we have an example of some trench rescue operations going on. There are 31 trench rescue personnel. To the bottom left, you see our rope training. So that's actually one of our cadets at that same facility I mentioned out at the EOC. And then we have some confined space training. We have currently 20 confined space rescuers in the department.
So continuing some pictures that they say was always worth a thousand words. We'll keep it to less than a thousand per picture. In the top left picture, we have a joint operation between Harlingen Police Department, Harlingen Fire Department, and South Texas Emergency Care Foundation in trying to share some of the wealth of knowledge in incident management when we have a comprehensive, unified response to an event. In the right, top right picture, we've seen this picture before. This is a picture of the three strike teams that came to help the Harlingen area and outerlying areas with teams coming from all over the state. In this case, we, we activate our Emergency Operations Center and begin emergency management. And just for a brief second, to distinguish between incident management and emergency management is that an incident management is a, is particularly to a singular location geographical area in which regional or local resources are utilized. And of course, emergency management is when there is a disaster declaration, which happened during March, and assets from all over the state, all over the region, all levels of government, from the feds down to the locals, including county responses, and that we are each working to meet our objectives collectively, and that is to serve the public. In the bottom left-hand picture, we have a integrated response to active violent incidents in which fire, police, and EMS would actively respond. And, and preparation to that, we collaborate and set up exercises to where our initial boots-on-the-ground responding personnel can establish a safe operation foundation to rescue and alleviate the impacts of violent incidents. In the bottom right-hand corner, our participation, the Harlingen Fire Department's participation, we were requested and by invite to participate in a new program that the state of Texas has initiated with the International Association of Firefighters, the International Association of Fire Chiefs, Texas Commission of Fire Protection, Texas Engineering Extension Service, Texas Forest Service. And that is to instruct 250 instructors throughout the state of Texas to get all firefighters, both volunteer and career in combination, to be trained in interface fires. And so as Chief Alberton elaborated earlier, we do regular firefighting. We do wildland firefighting, but then there was a gap in between, and that's referred to as interface fires. And that's where homes are built and are around vegetation for, for amenities reasons. Actively, we see, think of large fires in California, so we take a lot of principles from CAL FIRE and migrate. And so that's a, a very new, novel participation for us. And in fact, Chief Alberton and I happen to be the only two south of San Antonio. So it's good to have representation in Harlingen for the entire south of Texas. In this slide here, we have the top-left picture. We just recently had a smoke alarm campaign in which 76 homes were serviced with 125 alarms installed. We had collaboration from now Commissioner Calazos-Gomez, who is present, Harlingen Fire Department, but in addition to the Harlingen Fire Department taking the lead, we had Harlingen Rotary, Harlingen Sunshine Rotary, Red Cross, Cameron County Farm Marshal's Office and Emergency Management, Brownsville Fire Department, San Manito Fire Department, Far Fire Department. Hold on to this. Starbase Volunteer Fire Department, UTRGV, and Los Niños, who participated to help promote awareness in the areas south of town around the King, Knox, Lamb neighborhoods, and attempting to have a conversation with residents to try and make available to them, whether it was a device or just a knowledge. And that was a good, successful campaign. We hope to do more joint ventures. The top right is a example of training that the Harlingen Fire Department supports, and that is a CERT program, which stands for Community Emergency Response Teams. And that is a 20- to 30-hour program that we provide. So if you think of it sort of like a citizens' fire academy, I guess it's fair to say it's something similar to that, that we provide to not just residents, residential residents, but community residents that have businesses that can tie in some type of disaster preparedness and emergency training for themselves. Bottom right, that is a picture of the latest group of HCISD students participating in the, their second year, which is a two-year program, their second year and their hands-on skills. Proud to say that we have had three young people graduate from this program, and they're currently hired with Harlingen Fire Department. And we wish to see more. We wish to see not only them migrate from the Harlingen program into the Harlingen Fire Department, but throughout the, the United States as their certification would allow them to. The bottom-left picture is just a quick shout-out to the Harlingen Professional Firefighters Association. And I know we're representing the Harlingen Fire Department with the members, almost anonymous and identical, in which the HPA FFA raises money to immediately deliver needs to people who suffer fire losses. So in the event that somebody loses their house and has no one, nowhere to stay, we're able to get them immediately into a hotel, which Mr. Segura has been very, been very instrumental, as well as a lot of other hotel owners and operators. And we're very, we're very happy to work with anybody that, that helps to alleviate those stresses. Some department statistics. Our annual budget is approximately $12 million each fiscal year. Approximately 90% of that is in salaries and benefits. So the remainder is for equipment and operating expenses. On the average, $1.2 to $1.6 million is the cost of a fire truck. 2.5 is a rough estimate cost for, for a fire station. Why do I bring that up? Because I want to thank you for the two that are in order right now. In previous years, we waited up to three years to get a fire truck, and now we're looking at less than 18 months to be able to receive them right around the July 2026 timeframe. And they'll be coming out of Florida as opposed to Wisconsin, to Houston, and then to Harlingen. Bringing up the fire station, I believe the chief had provided a capital improvement plan for Station Six of $2 million and Station One. The 75-year-old that Chief Alberton was talking about at 2.5 million. $8,000 roughly estimated is provided, to provide an outfit each firefighter. That's about 70 pounds worth of gear that they wear without any hose or any additional tools. Calls for service, approximately $3,500 per calendar year. Calls for service, approximately three thousand five hundred per calendar year, eighty percent of which are medical-based emergencies. I say "medical-based" because we all know South Texas Emergency Care Foundation provides emergency medical transport. We provide the first responder program, so essentially, there's more of us than them. There's three of us on a truck, there's two on their truck, they're able to transport, and we're able to arrive a little faster, stabilize, get ready for transport for those, for those citizens that need it. We have eight engines, primary frontline engines, three reserve units, two brush units for the wildland and urban interface fires, and we have two supervised units that are actively operating as we speak. Typical structure fire, residential fire, has anywhere from thirteen to fifteen personnel Best part of the slide is the last slide. So, we have an ISO rating of two, and I'll speak to that in just a second, and how that is a great thing. In 2023, Chief Albetas led the department to being reclassified from a rating of three to a rating of two. What that spells is a, what ISO stands for is Insurance Service Office, and they rate three categories when it comes to the Fire Department. They rate the Fire Department, they rate the water utilities, in this case, Harlingen Water Works, and then our dispatch and communications. And with that being said, they totaled that up, and based on how well the services and how well the departments are equipped, is a classification from one to ten. We went from a three to a two, and that spells cost savings for policyholders. And so the illustrations that we have there is that we're teaming up with Water Works to operate the fire hydrants and to provide tests and statistical information data that they need to compile and inventory. On the right-hand side, one of our responsibilities is to, once a year, test the pumps on the fire trucks, as well as the hoses. And we'll entertain any questions that you all might have.
Chief, let's talk about that CERT program a little more.
The which program?
The CERT?
Yes.
I just happened to be talking to one of your former colleagues, Joe Garcia.
Okay, yes, yes.
And he was just raving about this program and how we need to be implementing it along our neighborhood watches. And we worked with the HPD when they do, when you all do your neighborhood watch meetings. Is the CERT program ever brought up?
No, I'm telling you that, but I know that they've done presentations.
Perfect, yeah, I think it's something fantastic. I remember during one of the emergencies we've had over the years, FEMA was saying that you're going to get a faster response from your neighbor than you are going to get from emergency services, right? Fire, water, National Guard, whatnot. And so I think this neighborhood collaboration and really pushing the CERT program, I think, would be something that we should consider as a commission, whether we have trainings there at Casa de Sol or Casa de Amistad or whatnot, to really, really promote this, I think, that'd be fantastic.
I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner. One community that does stand out is Sunshine Estates on the northwest side, in which they have actively had some individual participation, and they've promoted within their gated community or their sovereign community, in which they've applied that and enhanced their neighborhood watch program, which is self-sustaining through their own fundraising. We would gladly entertain helping others help themselves, and neighbors helping neighbors. And that's obviously, when we saw during the flood, that's what we saw. We were, all emergency services were inundated, and it was really neighbors helping neighbors until emergency services could relieve those neighbors of that burden. But we absolutely would love to entertain any, any group, any individual that would be interested. We would like that.
Perfect. Is there any way that you could get us a little more information about potential training on that?
Oh, absolutely. We really just need the people to show up, and we can create a schedule. And again, the twenty to thirty hours is really dependent on the number of modules that people are interested in. So for example, we've had some retired nurses, and so we provide some basic advanced first aid beyond just a Band-Aid, but CPR, AD training, oxygenation, if that's what's prescribed to say a patient or a home provider. But when we do get people with prior experience, that sometimes that cuts down, because they already know. So teaching some, a nurse how to apply a non-rebreather, so a moot point, even though we're willing to go over it with them. And so, and the range of the schedule is really dependent on our audience. And so typically, sometimes we'll have classes in the evening, sometimes we'll have them on the weekend, sometimes we'll skip weekends, because sometimes weekends are very valuable.
And is there a certification for that? I know, I did my CPR training, American, American Red Cross gave me a little card.
Yes.
Is there a certification or card you give to be certified?
So there's a certificate of completion, not necessarily a certification. This is a FEMA-structured curriculum. We do have three master instructors and sufficient staff to provide, and to discuss a little bit more of a background, is disaster psychology, how do you stay calm helping somebody? Some CPR, as I talked about, some bandaging, splinting, cribbing, how do you lift something safely if something has collapsed on somebody? Controlling utilities, water, gas, use of fire extinguishers, you saw in the illustration there. So those are the things that are really structured within that curriculum.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
I think those are great ideas, and I'm sure that you'll bring it to fruition. I think it's important, and they're already having such a wonderful response with the neighborhood watch, that I think it'd be a good collaboration, and y'all are already working on other stuff together, so I think that'll be great. I don't have any questions, I just, you know, just want to, you know, I say this all the time, but y'all are doing an amazing job, and I couldn't be prouder of the Harlingen Fire Department. I think that, you know, during times of crisis, like we saw during the flood, and seeing Chief Albetas really take action and really get everybody on the same page, and all of the wonderful work that you did collectively with everybody else that helped, really spoke to the heart of the Fire Department, which is to serve. And I know you touched on it a little bit, but you really do give back in such a big way through the association. Also, I know that I just was with you handing checks to cancer patients that you, you know, don't have to do, but raise funds to help folks that are in our community that are suffering. In addition to that, other, you have the boot campaign, you just are constantly giving back, you don't have to do that, but it is twenty-four-seven with y'all, and we really appreciate everything that you do, and know that the community sees it. We see you, we appreciate you, and we're here to support you.
Thank you again so very much, and God bless y'all.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item nine, public hearings, and at this time, we don't have any items under that, so we're going to move on to item ten, action items, which City Commission will discuss, consider and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Item ten A is consideration and possible action to approve a resolution establishing the thirty-ninth annual lighting of the Arroyo to be held on December fourth, 2025, at Mckelby Park, and to request from TechDOT a temporary partial road closure of Business Seventy-Seventh Sunshine Strip for the safety of the public during the event from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM, and authorize the interim city manager to sign the agreement. We have parks.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Unanimous. Okay, item ten B is consideration and possible action to approve a budget of two-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars for drainage improvement projects previously approved under the MOU agreements with the Cameron County Drainage Districts and Irrigation Districts, and we have engineering.
Hello, everyone. Roberto Fernandez, City Engineer. The MOU collaboration aims to improve stormwater management and public safety by netting the city to assist in drainage improvements that cross jurisdiction ownership boundaries without shifting legal or operational responsibility away from those districts. The proposed two-hundred-and-forty-thousand budget will fund the purchase of materials for drainage improvement projects previously approved under the interlocal MOU agreements. The infrastructure being removed and replaced belongs to the City of Harlingen and not to the partnering MOU entities. The city drainage crew will perform the installation and replacing of aging systems with new infrastructure designed to improve stormwater conveyance and reduce flooding in key areas throughout the city. These improvements are intended to enhance overall stormwater conveyance. The following are the engineering cost estimates for the project, see the attached for the itemized cost estimate. For Spanish and secluded acre stitch improvements project, it is one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-five-hundred. Westgate drainage improvement projects, twenty-one-thousand-five-hundred, and a contingency amount of twenty-five-thousand. So what you'll see on the screen right now, that is for the Spanish-included ditch widening improvements. In the gray shade, it has the existing outfalls. For secluded, we have five outfalls discharging to the North Main Drain, and within Spanish, three. So what we're proposing is, as we're doing the improvements, we've already excavated a lot of the existing material, but the pipe is elevated, so we're needing to drop that pipe and ensure that it's below the berm. In that connection, we'll be adding a manhole, and one of the key items here to reduce flooding is at the outfall, we're going to be adding something called a backflow preventer. So it will allow water to go out, but once a certain elevation is reached, it will close, preventing ditch from the water, water from the ditch flowing back into the community. This project, the image being shown was collected on the eleventh. It shows the current conditions. For the most part, a lot of the work has already been done. This is a different angle, and if you see there, there are, the outfalls show currently elevated, so right now, we're just waiting for the approval, being able to make sure we submit the orders. As soon as we get that, our public crew will begin the installation.
Robert, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How many, I mean, because this is a great thing, and I, you know, I commend Commissioner Lopez for advocating for this for his district. How many homes are we improving, how many homes are going to benefit from this?
I don't have that number available to me, but I could get it, share it with Mr. Garcia.
Please.
There's a lot of doors I knocked on in those areas.
You don't have a number?
Yeah, it's.
Do you like have an estimate?
Nah, it's a lot. That's all I know.
Over two-hundred homes.
Over two-hundred homes?
Yeah.
It feels like more. That's awesome.
I will say that, you know, for those that haven't, I guess, followed along since the execution of the MOU and all of the research that kind of went into this, but identifying the areas, sometimes, you know, having to go through that flood was nothing, no one wanted to do that, and it came as a surprise, but it also gave us an opportunity to really hone in on the areas of our community that were, that experienced these floods. And I think that the secluded acres and Spanish acres historically have had those issues, but this has given us a different perspective and trying to simulate what happened back then and how we can improve. But I know that, I think, I want to say almost everybody was underwater in those areas. And so, and I, and I know Westgate also, you guys were working around the clock in that area, and they were fortunate not to get water in their homes, but we want to make sure that, moving forward, that it's not at risk either. So for those that, you know, since we had the MOU in a prior commission meeting, can you just elaborate just a little on the MOU and the drainage districts that are collaborating, and why that's important?
Definitely. So there were about eight projects located throughout the city, and for the most part, those projects were outside City of Harlingen ownership. So typically, Drainage District Number One, Number Three, Five, Seven, they do the maintenance and the improvements. So what was approved was for us to be able to partner up. We have the drainage crews, we're available to do the ditch widening excavations, assist in anything that we agreed. Of course, we're not going to go in without permission, we are collaborating with each entity. And for this location, I just wanted to reiterate, it is our infrastructure. For one of the, one of the projects, we are improving the hill crossings. Drainage District Number Six is buying the material and procuring all the materials. But for these projects, it's our infrastructure, it's our falls that discharge to the entities.
Which is Drainage District Number Five?
Yes. The partnership was with Drainage District Number Five, Number Six, Number Three, and Number One, and Irrigation District Number One, Two, and Three.
And so for those that may not know, could you talk about what percentage of ditches in our community that are owned by the City of Harlingen versus those from the, all of the entities that you've described?
If I recall correctly, it was about the twenty percent?
Twenty-two percent.
Yeah. It's a very small amount.
So without having these MOUs, we cannot access?
That is correct.
Make the improvements.
So what we've been doing, I've been collaborating with each general manager. Once we have an approved set of plans, we present what we're proposing in terms of the improvements, they'll review it. We also bring onboard Harlingen Water Works or anybody that has a utility in there, just to ensure that what we're doing is not going to affect them negatively.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
If we go back to the previous, that slide right?
This one right here.
So we're going from a thirty-inch, or a twenty-four-inch pipe to a thirty-inch pipe right there?
Correct. Right, on the right side, you see a green line. Right now, that is essentially the elevation of the, of the stormpipe component. So it continues, and right now, like I said, it's elevated about eight feet. Since where we're dropping the bench at, we want to make sure that all this space is used for detention. So at this point, we'll be able to reduce angle it going down to be below the existing bench, the bench we just widened, and outfall about three to four feet above the flow line, versus being compared right now. This image shows.
So we're raising it?
We're dropping, lowering it.
But by lowering it, and if we have a bigger storm, and we have a flap gate on there, won't that, if we have a big rain, the flap gate will be stuck or shut faster?
No.
Because it's lower?
No. So the way it works, it will allow flow to continue, even if it's submerged, it'll only close once we, and they're site-specific design. So the intent is where, once the elevation reaches the cul-de-sac, basically where it's going to be overtopping the street, it'll prevent water from going from the ditch back into the streets. And since the berms are about four to five feet above the streets, it will allow for that water to be retained within the ditch right away.
Then why don't we upsize from a, instead from a twenty-four to a thirty, why don't we go twenty-four to a forty-eight?
Because the amount of water being released, it's already controlled, it's just essentially the amount of water being released from the subdivision, it's already, how is it, controlled? We're trying to make sure it's still within existing parameters. So we're looking at, there's two that are thirty-six-inch pipe, let me get the list, there's two existing thirty-six-inch pipe outfalls, and three that are, two that are twenty-four. We, on those, I saw that they were a bit undersized, so I recommend it for upsizing to a thirty. And again, this is still going to be able to flow the street efficiently during normal storm events.
The issue that we had in March is that, that flap gate did shut, right? And then secluded acres and Spanish acres are bowls, and so then, with the flap gate shut, the water just starts piling up. I know we bought the pumps for them, but I just want to make sure that if we're going to do this, we're doing it the best way possible, and we make sure that we avoid mistakes of the past.
Correct. And I believe the existing flap gates, they've been there for over fifteen, twenty years.
No. They were put in three years ago, because I advocated for them, and we paid for them.
But they're the metal ones, and I believe the seal itself, it's not necessarily working a hundred percent. What happens here is that water, a lot of the Harlingen watershed is draining through this North Main Drain, so it's flowing north, there's ditch crossings that reduce, or something that's preventing flow, so water starts back flowing. And once that water elevation keeps increasing, it's going to go back into the pipes, whatever is nearby, and it's essentially all of those outfalls.
We, excuse me, we had a, what, a thousand-year storm?
Yes. It was classified as a thousand-year storm event, due to the amount of rain that occurred within that period.
That period. What percentage, what would this be good enough for a hundred or a five-hundred-year storm?
For flowing out?
Yes.
For flowing out, usually we design them to be at least twenty-five-year storm conveyance. So if a new subdivision comes in, that's what, we made sure that the pipe is sized to those standards.
Twenty-five or fifty?
Twenty-five. The detention is fifty, but release conveyance within the system is twenty-five, and it's just how much water can be pushed from point A to point B. A being the house, B being the outfall.
And so what's this, going to be a twenty-five?
Correct. Oh, no, right now, it is twenty-five-year storm. Yes, sir.
And so if we go from the twenty-four to a thirty, what does that bring us to?
Twenty-four to a thirty?
Twenty-four inch to a thirty-inch pipe.
That is a twenty-five-year storm.
So a thirty-inch, that's twenty-five years.
Because it all depends on basically the slope and the area. Cause it, it all depends on basically the, uh, the slope and the area of how much water we're able to push.
If, if we start getting more storms that are a hundred, five-hundred year storms, this is not going to hold. We've got to start thinking ahead. We've been very lucky that we haven't had any hurricanes. We've been, we've had some floods, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yes, sir.
And twenty twenty-five. So i- it's concerning. Uh, I know every, I don't know people specifically living in these, these areas, but they've hurt and there's others that are right on the verge of hurting real badly. So we need to, I know, I believe we accepted what, a twenty-five year storm recently? We might want to.
For standards?
Yes.
Yes, so whenever a development occurs, they have to do a detention pond or provide detention for a fifty year storm. That's the volume and then convey the water within the streets for twenty-five, so everything being underground. And then release from the detention pond to the existing ditch, a ten year. So all those, all that means is that a different amount of water being pushed through the design area.
And if we have a five-hundred year storm, is that sufficient to move the water?
A lot of the, I don't think there's any system in the United States that can handle five-hundred year storm events. They're, they're being designed right now, at least here in the valley, within fifty year detention. We're actually one of the very few cities that provide twenty-five year conveyance. Most do ten, ten year.
We, we have to do what we have to do.
Yes, sir.
And we don't have three hundred, five hundred million dollars to make for a five-hundred year storm or a thousand year storm. So we have to address what is.
So Robert, I think, um, let's kind of just, um, take this and, and, and you're so smart and, um, you know, you've got the engineering hat on, but for those of us that, uh, or those that are maybe watching from home, and I know a lot of people in that area are going to be paying attention, um, the concern here is we're allocating a lot of money.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, one of the priorities for this commission, as you saw with our comprehensive plan and the priorities set out for these next few years are the focus on drainage. And so right now, what we're asking you is, is this, could it be better? We understand that this, um, this is what we require, but I do think that District Two, especially this area is, is, has really seen significant hardship for many, many years. And so if we're going to invest, we don't want it to be just a, a small Band-Aid. And so if move, you know, going, and, and I don't know, that's why we rely on you, if up, up sizing the size of the pipe is going to improve, um, even just a little bit, I think that's kind of what we want to know so that way potentially we can, if we have to invest a little more, then we need to do that because we need to do all we can. We don't have, to Commissioner Mike's point, we can't, uh, you know, we don't have a blank check, but right now we have money, um, that we've allocated for drainage and we have crews and now it's amount about what you need. And we don't want to be revisiting three years from now and saying, we spent all this money and it wasn't enough and it didn't move the needle at all. And so that's the concern. And of course, it's y'all's time too, right? And, and, and investing in this project. So do you feel confident that this here is what is best for this, um, area or what is being proposed by Commissioner? Would that make a difference? And if so, what, what would that look like?
Right now, yes. I, I do feel very comfortable. I did allow a contingency amount, so I could always revisit it, verify the calculations and numbers. Uh, but yes, right now I feel very comfortable with this assigned, uh, because not only is the pipe one of the thing we're improving, but also all the detention that we provided within the ditch. So now there is about forty acre feet that can now be added here. In case a storm event occurs and water starts elevating, you have more of that water staying within the ditch before it could, um, go back into the streets, the homes, et cetera. But like I said, I'll definitely verify, reach out and, and ensure that I could use that contingency pond in case we do need to increase the piping.
Okay.
Great. So I'm sorry, I'm asking Oscar if he's comfortable with this.
You know, Robert, one of the things that you haven't mentioned is, uh, the, 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 the communication that you've been having, uh, with DD number five.
Right.
What else are they proposing to just, to, to help, to help alleviate the flooding there in those areas just further downstream?
Yes. So one of the main, because the system is interconnected, right? Uh, it goes from upstream, downstream. So some of the improvements being proposed further downstream, north of Loop 499, where this ditch, uh, outfalls, North Main Drain, they're already planning on, um, they've been secured, uh, a grant fund for construction, so widening the ditch to the maximum capacity, providing detention ponds. I believe they had two areas. One was A, the other one was about a hundred acres. I've received the plan, so I'm in communication with the D five, but this is going to help, the improvements they're proposing will help. So improving the system will help and mitigate flooding downstream, down the line.
I have something to say.
Yes, ma'am.
Robert, um, so within what we have right now within Harlingen, this is what you can do with money you have and the land you have in this area as you're moving per area.
Correct.
Like, this is what you're doing at this area and you're moving on to the next one.
Correct.
So this is well executed as far as you know?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So right now, um, I know here I put that it was previously approved projects, there were eight. Once we complete those in-house, I'll be bringing in the next rotation for you guys to prioritize, help us decide what projects to do.
Okay. And that's why you're moving from the twenty-four inch to the thirty?
Yes, ma'am.
And then eventually if this doesn't work, I mean, nobody wants to go in and use it twice and like Mayor and other Commissioners have said, nobody wants to go in there and do it again if we can do it the best, but it takes money and it takes land. However, we want to be able to do what we can with what we have and go on to another area that's also flooded before.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item eleven, which is board appointments, specifically appointed or discussion and possible action to include appointment and/or removal of any position subject to appointment or removal by statute ordinance or by laws.
I do not have any at this time.
Uh, because of the election, I'm going to be doing a bunch of reappointments right now. So it's going to be Debbie Reyes, be reappointing her, just because hers is not running concurrent with mine, to the Community Development Advisory Board. Bill Holloman, electrician alternate to the Construction Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Tim Elliott to the Golf Course Advisory Board. Roel Rodriguez, uh, to Library Advisory Board. Adrian Galavan and Tercita Garcia to the Veterans Advisory Board. Shannon Harville to the Animal Shelter Advisory Committee. John to the Healthy Harlingen Advisory Board. Debbie Reyes to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board, as well as Cynthia Nava. Now my notes, I'll give them to you. Mara just putting it on the record. Rodolfo Andarza to the Keep Harlingen Beautiful Board. Daniel Vidal to the Museum Advisory Board. Robert Salmeran and Mike R. Azell to the Senior Citizens Advisory Board. Linda Coeir and Michael Bolin to the Zoning Board of Adjustments.
No, I was just thinking, I don't know if that, um, Healthy Harlingen, I'll look into that. I don't know if he's still a member of the board. What is his name?
June.
Oh, June, yes. Okay, I thought you said John. I was like, I've never heard of a John. Okay, no, yes. I, I don't have any at this time. None?
None. I would like to reappoint Nartizo Villal, um, the third, to the Veterans Advisory Board.
All right, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to item twelve, executive session. All items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the discretion of the mayor. However, City Commission will not take any action in closed session. Twelve A is pursuant to Government Code, Section 551.071, Attorney Consultation and Contemplated Litigation, Section 551.072, Deliberation Regarding Real Estate, and Section 551.087, Economic Development, relating to the following projects. Project Tyler Beach, Skyline Smoke Signals, Roosevelt Organic, It's Time, Back to the Future, I, Prada, and Project Fantasy. Twelve B is consultation with Legal Counsel pursuant to Texas Government Code, 551.071, parentheses two, to receive attorney-client consultation protected by the attorney-client communication privilege.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries unanimously. The time is now seven oh six PM and we'll retire to executive session and be out shortly. The time is now seven oh six P M. And we'll retire to executive session and be out shortly.
Time is now 7:46 PM and we are out of executive session. Ms. Meyer?
Item 13, action on executive session items. The City Commission will reconvene on open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session section of this item. Item 13A, consideration and possible action on items 12A1 through 11 as discussed in executive session.
Making a motion to proceed as discussed on item 12A1 and 12A9. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously and no action on the others. That's all we have. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Hey, I think we can do a revitalization walk. I want to knock out my whole district this year. So, um, shit.